Get going. So may I have a motion to call the meeting to order? Tammy first, Heather second, all in favor? Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now we will have our first audience to visitors. After identifying themselves, residents may comment on both agenda and non-agenda items. Would anyone like to come up and speak at this time? No. Okay. We're gonna move on to the discussion of the traffic light at the junior senior high school, which was brought back up again by Heather Young. And thank you for bringing this back up for discussion. We have some visitors here tonight who are going to give us some information on past conversations about the traffic light, so I'd like to invite them up. Come on up. It should be on John.
Hi, yes, how are you? John Grillo, I'm the district architect. Hello, everybody. So I've been in the district since 1998-ish. And I think we've been talking about traffic light and traffic patterns since about 2000, about 23 years. It started right when Rick Volp got here, right as the bond issue was being passed. Around 2000 or 2001, the bond passed in, I think, February 6th of 2001. And we had, we always talked about it, sort of like kicked the can down the road. At one point, we took a field trip to the end of the, end of the road out by Lawrence Hill to take a look at some options. But it never really, the bond had started, the district had all of their capital money tied up in the bond issue. We didn't really have a separate yearly capital phase like we were introduced to when Dr. Bernhard got here in about 2006. And then in 2007, we were asked to do a formal study, to begin the paperwork for a formal study, to see if a traffic signal is even warranted going out on Lawrence Hill Road. So Wayne Muller from R&amp;M Engineering is my traffic consultant, is here. He did the original findings, and if you open your green packet, it's the, it's on the left-hand side. This document here was the 2007. So basically, every hour, they take readings. How many cars go east on Lawrence, how many go west, how many make a left, how many make a right, coming in and out of, out of the exit from, to Lawrence Hill Road from the school. He'd do that hourly, hour by hour for the entire day. That documentation was put together, kind of got pushed off to the side a little bit. And then it was brought back up in 2009 when Wayne had submitted a formal report, which is the second document dated June 30th, 2009, which talks about the tables, the findings. And basically what it said is, there definitely is a need for a traffic light leaving the school district onto Lawrence Hill Road.
I just have a point of inquiry here. The first report you referred to actually says June 30th, 2009. So what were the dates of this report then? Because it says it on the back as well.
Yeah, we had done some initial, Wayne, what was that, in 2007, we did some initial?
So these photographs then are from 2009 or 2007?
Okay. Yeah, because some of them says, oh, you know what, I'm looking at your project number, 2007, so maybe it was, okay.
Okay, sorry, I'm still confused. So the pictures are from 2009, but some of the reports from 2007, and this was compiled in June of 2009? Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay. And what the findings determined was, ultimately, we would need two traffic signals because of the way in and out.
Are you concerned you can't hear John? Oh, sorry, we won't hear you on the microphone, right? Yeah, that would be great, thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, so what, what the study had determined was we would really need, because of the spacing of the exit ways, two from the nature preserve across the way, one from Seawood Court, and one from the campus, we would need actually two traffic signals. So that was discussed. We sent that document to the superintendent, the board had a copy of that. And then again, it kind of floundered around a little bit. And then in 2011, there were some discussions at the facilities committee that if we add the lights, would we adversely affect the roads surrounding Lawrence Hill Road? So then Wayne had written another letter to Dr. Walansky, and that's the last letter on the right-hand side. I'm sorry, the June, January 21st letter to Dr. Walansky, which basically said that if we add the lights, we will not adversely affect or create a negative impact on any of the surrounding roads.
Can I just ask, when you say that we needed two traffic lights, would they be two, are they two traffic lights timed the same? Or so they're both red at the same time, they're both green at the same time?
Essentially, yes, essentially the, because of, I'm sorry, again, Wayne Muller, Robinson and Muller Engineering, essentially because of the way that the, all the driveways are situated, we really would need two traffic signals that would function as one.
Okay, thank you.
So with, after the 2011 letter was sent back to the district, Judy had forwarded that to the town. And the town then, which is the town of Highway, the town of Huntington letter you guys have on the right-hand side dated August 9th, agreed with Wayne's findings that traffic signals were warranted at that exit. And then they reminded us that it has to be submitted to the town for approval, and the funding of the light has to come from the school district. In 2015, we did another study, which is also attached. That one is addressed to Mark Margulies, who was the director of facilities at the time, again, talking about traffic light leaving the district going onto Lawrence Hill Road. So really over from 2000-ish all the way to 2015, we really talked about the lights. We did different options and scenarios. We had traffic studies done, reports done. Ultimately, the traffic signal did not make it into the 2017 bond, which we're now working on that. Which leads us to current day, which we really have two things we can, we can talk about. Timeline, if we want to move forward, and then funding. So timeline, if we were given authorization to proceed, the town would require Wayne to do updated analysis, make sure nothing's changed from 2011 and 2015 till today. I'm sure it's gonna say that we still need a traffic light. Wayne would then have to do, his firm would do construction drawings that would actually show the traffic signal, how they would operate. And that would be submitted to the town. Because the work is taking place off-campus, we don't have to go to the state education department, which we normally do, we're only required to submit to the town of Huntington. So we don't have to go to the state, which is good. So say it takes Wayne, I don't know Wayne, I don't want to speak for you, but to get plans to the town?
About three months.
And then I figured, once they're in there for a week or two, maybe we can accidentally make some phone calls and say, listen, time is of the essence, pressing, maybe the town can kind of help out and work with the school district to maybe kind of get the plans pushed a little bit quicker than, you know, a residential curb cut or something to that effect. Once we have town approval, and again, there's a big but that I'm leaving off to the side here, once we have town approval, with, you know, like all other product, we have to bid the project, award the project, order the material, and then do the installation. So no hiccups, maybe, you know, I don't want to say 100%, but by September 1st? You know, again, several factors there. You know, lead time of equipment, getting the equipment, doing the install, that's all subject. I mean, I think when Wayne and I had talked, we'll try to specify as much standard material as possible. Doesn't seem to be a long lead. We don't know what the town could say. They may want to see, you know, as you're traveling west on, traveling east on Lawrence, they might have some warning signs or some warning lights, flashing lights to let you know that there is a, a light coming ahead. If you're on Lawrence going west, it's pretty straight, you'll be able to see the light. We don't know whatever else there is, so that would be up and running. The key then now, my big but that I'll bring back to the table, is the funding for the project. Because it's a capital project, we need voter approval before we can take that money and spend it accordingly. So there are some options that we can talk about on the funding side. Our side, my side with myself and Wayne, is more straightforward. It's design the traffic signal, get it ready for bid, the installation, and then off we go. We would have to talk as a board and administration in terms of how we're gonna fund the project and that kind of stuff.
I have just, sorry, a question about the materials. So I know that this timeline is, it's sounding much more rapidly moving than what we'd originally heard, which is it could take two years, I think, was the original report of what we'd heard, right Christine? Okay, okay, got it, okay. So, and then, okay, because it's off premises, you're not on the mic, so I'm repeating what you're saying, it doesn't have to go to SED. Yeah, okay, thank you Christine. So the materials though, is there any delay in materials right now for traffic lights? Or is that not something that's, as we hear, keep hearing about things being delayed?
Well, the town has very specific specifications for the equipment that would be installed for the traffic signal. We could get a pretty good handle as to what those components are. Once we prepared our preliminary design, met with the town, they kind of agreed with the base. And then we could reach out to the suppliers and see where we stood with the materials that we would need to install. So it's, it's difficult for us to tell right now. I mean, there was a big backup due to the pandemic, but things have kind of eased a little bit as far as the, the equipment that's, that's required in order to construct the traffic signals. I could make some inquiries in advance to find out what would be a long, if there are any significant long lead time items.
That would be helpful. I had a two-part question, but Lisa, I know you had a question also, so why don't you? Okay, so my second part was that we had a resident come and ask earlier, I believe this school year, about the possibility of a traffic circle. And if we had a traffic circle instead of a traffic light, my question, and this is probably pie in the sky, but is, could we use our own land more than the road, you know, could we come more into our property for a traffic circle? And what, like, what would that timeline look like, the pricing? Because traffic circles, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but from a safety standpoint, are less likely to have a high-impact accident because you're going so slowly through a traffic circle as opposed to add a traffic light? In theory, okay.
In theory, yes. I mean, that's something we would have to explore because due to the unique nature of the area, where you have the Seawood Court just to the west, you've got the two driveways to the nature conservancy. We'd have to really take a look at the, the right-of-way requirements to see how that would all, all fit in. Because, you know, traffic signal, probably a minimum traffic signal is the one over in town. Excuse me, at Gerard Street by the post office, that's a very small.
Oh, the traffic circle, yeah.
The small one. And then if you move further to the east, you've got the two circles on one ten. Those are larger, which you could see how much land they require. We would have to look at and see if we could even fit one in, in this area. And then we'd have to get the town to buy into that concept, obviously.
Right, it does move traffic along though too. I lived on Huntington Bay Road for a really long time, and when they put those traffic circles in.
Oh, I love them. Yeah, I live right over by the hospital. Yeah, I go through it all the time. It's, it's easier than sometimes it's sitting at some of the lights. And you're right, traffic does move efficiently. People in the area are used to them now because there are those three, right, in, you know, in the village essentially. That's something that could be explored. The cost would be, I, I really couldn't venture a guess because we'd have to take a look at, you know, the impacts to drainage and all those.
So it could actually bring the cost way up if you had to add drainage?
It could be wash.
Right.
Or it could be more, it could be less. You know, without doing a detailed study on that, it would be difficult for me to say.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to do both studies at the same time?
Yeah, I think that, you know, they're, I think that the town looks favorably on traffic circles.
Okay.
You know, as far as the traffic division of the town, recognizing the same things that you just indicated, where the vehicles would slow down. And we would have to do an analysis to see whether or not they'd be moving too slow. So that the, you know, the, because you've got a decent amount of volume on Lawrence Hill Road, we wouldn't want to have significant backups in probably more so the west.
Harbor road coming from the train.
Down, down from the hill.
Yeah.
We'd have to take a look at that. And there's modeling software that's available, that we could obtain the data that we would obtain as part of the signal warrant upgrade, and utilize that same data to analyze the impacts of a traffic circle.
My only concern with the traffic circle is that norm, like, normal people sometimes have trouble navigating traffic circles. We have a lot of inexperienced drivers that would be coming out of the high school, that's.
Yes, that's true. My, the concern though is that I think there's, studies show there's less accidents, I think, in traffic circles that cause injury than at a traffic light, I believe.
It's all a series of right turns, yes. Everyone's making a right turns are traditionally safer.
I have no doubt, traditionally, coming out of a high school where half the kids are, you know.
You might be right.
Seventeen, just, but that wasn't my question. I think it's definitely worth looking into though. But I think we need to also consider who the drivers are, you know, just in the back of our heads.
Let's see, if I could just, if we do that traffic study and we go onto the property, then we introduce SED again. So just keep that in mind.
Oh, and it might not be worthwhile, I just figured it was worth having a conversation about, yeah.
Also, in that same vein, I mean, if you're looking at, we would have to probably encroach on Seawood Court also, and there'd be a realignment of possibly that roadway and the school driveway in order to fit a traffic circle within the, the available right-of-way. I mean, because we did perform some right-of-way studies back in the day as far as for the traffic signal. And I have the map in front of me, but it, it could be a little cumbersome.
Okay, I'm not necessarily pro-traffic circle over traffic light. I'm pro-something there, but I just, a resident had asked about the traffic circle previously, so I thought we should bring it up here.
Yeah, Wayne, I think we got, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The other issue with the traffic circle, right, is you're talking about the traffic circles in Huntington. Steady traffic flow, like for school, we're gonna have summers, we're gonna have holidays, vacations, where the traffic circle wouldn't be as imperative, where if we had a light, right, we could basically almost shut the light down, right, at certain spots. So that, to me, that's the other issue with traffic circle versus traffic light for school.
And I think, Wayne, to your point on the traffic circle, I mean, at seven to eight in the morning, we're looking at 600 cars in an hour. I mean, that's gonna be, in my opinion, a very big traffic circle to handle that.
Right.
Because you're gonna still have that.
I think they're made more for, kind of more steadier traffic flow, where we have two major busy times, and then we're gonna have a lot of downtime.
Yes, you have significant peaks.
So it sounds like maybe we don't even need the study. I just wanted to bring it up because I know that there's been a resident who's come more than once, I think, to ask about a traffic circle, so.
I believe, like, just as far as we could look at it from a very qualitative perspective, and just see whether or not it even makes sense based on the volumes and the distribution of the volumes, it may not make sense. And I, just looking at the, the survey and the mapping, it, it could be very cumbersome to cite the traffic circle with Seawood Court and the driveway to the school so close in proximity. It might be difficult, and it may not, it may not actually geometrically work. And to your point, it may require more cost significantly in order to realign all the roads in order to make it fit. That could be a problem.
Keeping with what you were discussing earlier, with the traffic signal, we could pretend, and I think this was in some of the documentation, you've looked at this previously, you could make it tripped so that if it was a busy time of day or you saw there were a lot of cars coming at a time they normally wouldn't, maybe it's homecoming when normally no one's around, but we have huge volume, it could be activated, but you could also set it at certain times, so every day at dismissal, Monday to Friday, that that light would be working, right?
Well, the, the light would be operational 24/7/365. It would always be red, yellow, green in all the directions. But you're right, to that point, we, we would have the ability to change the timing plans so that more time could be given to the school driveway during its peak times and a little bit less time to Lawrence Hill Road. And we would analyze that with the software that we would use to, to perform the analysis and come up with a basic timing plan, and obviously, that would be approved by the town. But there are a lot of schools that have traffic signals at their driveways, right? I mean, it's common in driving around Long Island, you see a lot of, we represent the Hop Dog School District, they have traffic signals at their driveways. And they're timed appropriately to accommodate the spikes and, or the defined peaks. And yes, they could be modified for certain special events in coordination with the town. A lot of those events occur on a yearly basis. You could work with the town, they could come up with a plan for those special events that you had mentioned, yes. That's something that could be incorporated into the timing plans that would have to be developed for the traffic signal.
Would Cold Spring Harbor be responsible for any other signals down the road? Like a warning signal or anything?
Yes.
Oh, we would.
In my opinion, the town would, in, in looking at this and driving Lawrence Hill Road for many years, I mean, I think it would be prudent for some type of advanced warning signal or sign, probably a signal with the flashing beacon, with the, the signal sign, well in advance to the west, because you're coming up the hill, the topography, you've got the change in grade, the curve in the road. I think it would be prudent to have that installed. That's less, less complicated than the actual traffic signal itself, or the traffic signals, if you want to call them.
But that's something we would pay, we would.
In all likelihood, the town would want you to do that, yes.
So that would be incorporated into?
As part of this, it would be all part and parcel to the design. And, and as far as the, the design of the traffic signal, we would meet with the town periodically or for a preliminary design. We wouldn't just design one and hand it to them. We won't, we would elicit their input through every step of the way so that we would do it once and minimize back and forth with the town.
Wayne, could you give us a sense, you know, I know, I don't, we're not gonna hold you to this, but could you give us a range of cost for you to do the updated analysis and the construction drawing? You know, I know you did it.
Yeah, I think I.
Like 15 years ago, so what, what's the updated estimate?
Yeah, we, I think we, John, we had sent you proposals, were those submitted to the district?
Yeah, correct. Usually, I have yours, your.
We have, we put together two proposals. For the, for the updated study, it's essentially like around $6,000, and that includes meetings and conference calls and whatever we would have. But to update the study itself is $4,000 for the data collection and then the updated analysis. And then we budgeted around $2,000 for meetings to come back and discuss this with the board prior to submitting anything to the town, elicit comments from the board and that kind of thing.
And that would be?
I was just gonna say, is that a total of 6,000 or is it four, 6,000 and then another?
It's, for the updated study, it's $1,500 for the data collection, that's a fixed fee. $2,500 for the updated warrant analysis, that's fixed. And then we budgeted $1,980 for meetings, conferences, and hearings. So that's.
Around 6,000 total.
Could be a little less if we don't have as many meetings, or it could be a little bit more if we decide to.
We'll get you a full updated breakdown of costs alone, because we're gonna probably have to do soil warnings and additional survey work. And we'll want to keep a contingency in there as well, just in case.
And is there a separate cost for the drawing?
Yes.
Okay, and where does that typically run?
So, so our, our fee on the, on construction cost is 5% of construction cost, so all of Wayne's fee, I would be paying all of that as part of that overall construction cost. So really, the only thing, and we would roll in the initial updated traffic analysis into the overall project cost. So we would cover all of that as part of our standard architectural fee with the district.
And can you give us a sense of how much two traffic lights cost these days?
No. Without, without knowing more details of the design, because the cost, from, from when we originally prepared the, the, you know, reports and came up with an estimate, it's been close to 15 years.
Right.
The cost of materials has changed, but it, it's been cyclic as, as far as the costing goes. I mean, we could, I could ask around and come up with a ballpark, but I'd rather do that now, and I didn't prepare that information for tonight.
Understood, yeah, I mean, and.
There was no power out to Lawrence Hill, and now there is, so that may change the cost.
And.
Yes.
Yeah, and I completely understand that, but if you could find some kind of comps to give us a range of, of what we would be talking about, that would be really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, we've just completed a few projects. They're on state highways, but the equipment is relatively similar. We just completed the traffic signal at the entrance to the, I guess it's the Huntington Shopping Center just south of Wool Whippen Mall that, where Whole Foods is going. It could be Whole Foods, REI, Williams-Sonoma, all that good stuff. So, yeah, we could come up with some preliminary costing.
Great. And then John, when you said September 1st, is that if we start tomorrow? If we start tomorrow?
Pretty much, yeah.
And Christine, we have to go to public vote to use the funds, so, and that would typically be in May? But is there a way to do, we just, since we just had a public vote this week, I mean, last week, is there a way to vote prior to that?
Another, it would be another public vote prior to that.
Okay.
So it would be another public.
And there's a cost involved in that as well?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Advertising, employees, renting, you know, whatever we have to do. Or we, we have to determine the source, are we building it into the budget? Are we using capital reserve funding? Are we bonding? Those are really the three sources of money for a capital project.
So if it's built into the budget, do we need public approval?
Yes. It's specifically identified in the budget and as what you're spending that money on so that the people are opining exactly on that one-line item.
For the analysis and the study now, if we have that in our.
Yes, if we determine it to be an ordinary contingent expense, and I think we could, yes.
Okay, but the project cost itself.
Is considered capital.
It would wait till May potentially. The last vote was about 6,000 to 7,000, it costs?
To run the election?
Yes.
Oh, last week's vote.
Oh, wasn't as much, we didn't rent machines, we did paper ballot.
Okay, this could be a paper ballot vote though too, if it was a separate.
It could be a paper ballot vote if we did a separate, you know, election.
Got it.
So now, just one more thing on that. If, if it's gonna go into the May vote, we really can't bid an award until the funding is in place. So we could, I guess, be out to bid right before the vote, because then we're in, we're, as a district, can have a contractor hold his bid for 30 days. So we could bid it, accept the bids right before, budget passes, then we can award the bid, but we can't award the project until we have the funding and lock a contractor in if we don't 100% know where the money is coming from or if we have the approval by the community to spend the funds.
I have a point of inquiry on that as well. So we have to then say how much money we're gonna release and then bid the project. So why would anyone not come in at the amount that we are?
That's, that's the biggest problem with public works on, in terms of the public versus the private. We have to have the money before the project. We're on the private side, if we were building a shopping center and we wanted to put a light up, we would go out, we would get our pricing, and then the developer would write a check. But here's what we have to do, we have to come up with a budget prior to, included in, as a line item in the budget or a separate proposition under the capital reserve, not to exceed whatever, X number of dollars, $600,000, whatever it is. We can't go over that. So like, again, on the shopping center, if we say 600,000 and it comes in extra 50, the developer has to, so we have to make sure we really know what we're doing in terms of our budgets, because we cannot exceed that. That's why on all of the capital projects, you have a built-in soft-cost contingency. Even if as we're putting, we're putting the material in the ground, we come up with an unforeseen condition, there's something in the ground, we need additional funds to protect the district and not, to make sure the product is, is completed. So it's, it's so backwards, I mean, there's no other way around it, public first private side. So our numbers need to be tight, so Wayne will, will go ahead with the design work, meet with the town at any possible scenario, then present. We'll have to get the final, final pencils-down numbers to you, Christine, probably by the beginning of March the latest, so you can finalize your, putting it in your budget.
I'll just add this, if it's the beginning of March, we have a minimum of seven-week advertisement requirement by law. So then we're getting close to the May vote anyway?
So February 15th.
Well, that would be, you know, we just have to be aware that, like they just did this weekend, and be able to answer why we didn't do it during the normal vote that the public. the public is normally aware of, which is May, the third, you know, the third Tuesday in May. So we just have to be careful of the dates, and if we go out for a public vote, if we're getting close up to May, we may want to consider just doing it in May.
Wayne, could you give us a timeline of when we'd need to have everything done in the start-tomorrow category, too, just for our sense of when we'd need all this information and when we'd need the vote with the seven weeks? Is that possible? Can you work with Christine on that so we know?
Yes.
How to move, if we wanted to move quickly for the next school year?
Yeah.
How we could do that, I think, rather than...
I'd like to talk to John about that.
Rather than let the May vote dictate our timeline. Let's look at this one and then see what works out better for us.
I think that's something we could put together. Obviously, I'm not prepared to do that right now. I think we'd want to think about it and then put some definitive times. Because again, we're going to, as far as the traffic counting component of it, we're, we still have a few weeks left where we can count. Then we start to get into the holidays, and then we're looking at January, and then everything just gets pushed further out. Because there's a blackout window as far as, we wouldn't want to count, obviously, when school's closed, right? That would make no sense. So we've only got a limited amount of time between now, the end of Thanksgiving. We've got the first two weeks of December, theoretically, depending on the weather.
Winter break is very late this year.
Yeah, but depending on the weather, we don't count if it's raining or cruddy out. We want to get a typical day, and so there's a lot of other factors. So we could put that timeline together and figure out what we're doing.
So you would want to see the feasibility of a separate vote prior to the May vote?
I would. How does everyone else feel about that?
All right, yeah, we'll definitely work with Christine on a separate. Like I said, I think in 2001, when we, when we voted on the bond, it was February 6th, the vote won. So it was close to the, to the budget, but that's when we had voted that. But that means you'll need information.
That's about, it's usually about seven to 12 weeks before you advertise that, and at the beginning, you started that.
By 8:30 tomorrow morning, you're going to need it.
You started that in October.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the answer, to answer your question, Alex, it's, I think it really depends on how much more time we get and how much we really paid for that election last week. You know, how much do we pay, how much do we pay to run an election versus how much additional time does this really get us? And is it worth the effort?
Don't you want him to look into that?
Oh, absolutely.
Now, that was my question. Do we want to know the alternate date?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Not, do we want to move forward with it, but do we want to know it? I think we do, right?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But John, isn't it true if we group together more than one project in the vote and the bid, so in your example, the bid comes in high, we go to the public with, I'm making up a number, $600,000 not to exceed, and the bid comes in at 700,000, we cannot proceed with the project. There really is no alternates. There's nothing that we could take away in this project, like, you know, no shades or curtains to remove. So we are at a standstill, and we cannot do the project. An alternative to that, that's why most districts group together multiple projects, like you see in Bond 2019, it gives you the ability to not do certain projects when prices come in over. Our addition at the high school came in 30% over what we originally thought the estimates were. So it left us at the table, still doing the majority of the work on Bond 2019, but making other decisions. So the traffic light, married with some other considerations that the board may want to consider, means that if it did come in at 700,000, you could still proceed and maybe not do as much as the other project, whatever that might be.
Right, so some of the other items that were identified.
Air conditioning, a science classroom renovation, some other things we were considering, which wouldn't hold you up, and holding you up, if you, you know, I know, John, you've had experience, and I have in my past, of a project that there is no other funding for. You have to wait to go back out to a vote and ask your public for more money to fund that at a later time.
Oh, Christine, if we also, if, so let's say hypothetically, we added the air conditioning to this, and then both passed the vote, then possibly you could have air conditioning sooner also, right?
Yes, and it would allow you that flexibility that if the signal came in high, we do a little less air conditioning here.
Okay.
Just so that we don't get stuck with nothing.
This is why we talk things out, right? This is great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Any other information you think we should...
I think that's it for now, but as soon as we get more, I'll feed it all through Christine and Jill and get it to you as soon as possible.
Okay. And I think then, thank you.
You're very welcome. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. And I know we have Mr. Maranti here, who is a former school board member who was very involved in the traffic light for a number of years, so...
I'm excited about it here tonight.
Here we are again. You're excited by it, yeah.
You know, I thought it was so close, but I didn't understand, but it didn't happen. So this is, you know, I think safety is such an important thing.
Hold on, we have our second audience to visitors coming up now. So would you like to come up to the microphone?
Just say it into the microphone.
And say it into the microphone. It's our second audience to visitors. Come on up, Mr. Maranti.
I always say students, because the microphone is always so high.
You too, John.
Yeah, I just want to say, it's, you know, safety is one of the most important things as, as, you know, board members, teachers, everything. We always worry about students. And, I mean, I'll date myself, but when you pull a car out for that parking lot, it's like playing Frogger, you know, whether you're going to get cross or not. And I also taught, besides teaching science for many years, I did driver education for over 40 years with, through SCIOSET in numerous districts. And I'll tell you, student drivers, they get their license, they think they know how to drive, but they don't for at least another six, seven years. And you all know that as drivers, you really get better as time goes on. So pulling out of that driveway is, is just a terrible thing, and people don't time, you know, time things right. So it's good to see that, you know, I'm happy this thing is going to hopefully finally get done and everything. So, and hopefully it won't cost as much money. God, it wasn't that expensive 15 years ago. But then again, nothing else was.
Right.
So thank you very much and for the work you guys are doing and everything else. I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So nice to see you. Would anyone else in the audience like to come up? Bella Dorisi.
Hi. My name is Bella Dorisi, and I'm a senior this year at the Cold Spring Harbor High School. Being a senior at our high school comes with a big responsibility, off-campus privileges, and especially driving. At the end of the day, when that bell rings, all the students and staff in the building rush to exit unless they are staying for a club, sport, extra help, et cetera. This makes the hallways hectic as well as the parking lot. I can confidently say, almost all of us here have experienced that long line on the way out, especially if you get stuck behind those buses. One of the main reasons I feel traffic lights would initiate a remarkable impact isn't just physical, but also mental. When making that left or right turn out of school, the pressure is on. The long line of cars behind you creates anxiety. This can develop an unsafe situation for not only the people exiting the school, but also oncoming traffic. People will get nervous because of the amount of people behind them and make a turn when it may not be safe. After conversing with students and even teachers at the high school, I've learned that I'm not the only one feeling this way. As this feeling when making that turn may not be present or relatable to others, we are all familiar with feeling anxious. If there's something we can do to take this feeling away from our peers and prevent unsafe situations, I can't find a reason not to move forward with this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Bella. Would anyone else like to make any remarks at this time? I don't think anyone wants to follow that.
All right. So at this time, I am going to take a motion to adjourn to executive session. Lisa first, Heather second, all in favor? All right. Thank you all for coming tonight.